It is six thirty, we would like to call the meeting over. First agenda item, if you have any minutes from the previous meeting, if anybody has any thoughts, ideas, corrections, if you'd be kind enough to give in the window, otherwise I would look for a motion to approve. Motion to approve? Have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Next item on the agenda is public hearing, preliminary plat, Casel subdivision.
Yes, so we had the GDP meeting a little ago, and now the preliminary plat this year. There was staff planning review in your packet. And a lot of the comments came from your city engineer, so I invited him here to talk about those. Did you have any questions right away about the staff planning review or the comments? So you want to hear it from Brandon now, you want to hear it from the public first? Okay.
Brandon, I'm sure. Thank you Planning Commission. As Teresa alluded to, there is a staff planning review in your packet. With that, I did reference a few things here ultimately for the commission to consider tonight, specifically your city ordinances. There's a lot of talk about subdivisions and how we go about subdividing property, floodplain management. Then I also referenced the comprehensive plan that's currently in place. You referenced transportation goals and policies there, and then also public facilities, parklands, land use goals and policies there. And then I also referenced the current comp plan that we're in the middle of a draft and looking at moving forward in the next couple of months, a formal approval through the Planning Commission of the City Council of the comprehensive plan. So ultimately, I think those are items I guess would ask the commission to consider tonight when reviewing this comp, excuse me, reviewing this proposed subdivision. And to kind of summarize what the ordinance and the comp plan that's currently in place and that we're looking at moving forward with, in my opinion, to kind of summarize those, the intent is to preserve floodplains, recreation, open space, and ultimately protect the public. Like that, that's what the consideration from the commission should be tonight, the way I look at things from an engineering perspective and a planning perspective. So based on that, I do have my recommendations there, given the city engineering review. That is one, rejected preliminary plat based on not meeting the city ordinances in the comp plan. Approved the preliminary plat as presented with some conditions, and I'm not sure what was actually proposed with some of that outlaw. We've talked with the developer about conveying some of the outlaws in the trail corridor, not sure what's actually proposed, so I'll jump back into it. The second recommendation that was approved the preliminary plat as presented with the conditions that the outlaws S, T, F, and P, and I'll call those basically all the outlaws south of the channel, be conveyed to the city as parkland, and then also deed restriction provided drainage easement for any and all of the private lots coming to the north of the channel of the creek. But the third option is approved the preliminary plat as presented with some conditions of a conservation slash trail corridor along outlaws S and P, which are essentially the south side of the drainage way or south side of the creek or channel, with again those deed restrictions, drainage easements across the private lots. My ultimate recommendation, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to consider is recommend, what I think is the recommended option, option number two, which is conveying those outlaws to the south side of the creek to the city. Would that be the answer, any questions you may have?
Brandon, this may be, I don't know if it's for you or for Rich or the owners of the property, but outlot Q, with that being the extension of 10th Avenue, which was vacated, as I understand it?
Correct. I believe it was vacated, and it's just currently a house on that vacated right now.
That's my house.
I always had that.
So that's actually was a buildable lot, it wasn't split to lot seven and ten, east and west?
Correct. During the vacation, it likely was conveyed to the adjacent property owners.
Yep.
And I assume there was some action after that to ultimately make it into a buildable lot.
I don't know about that.
I think what they ended up doing is buying ten feet on the east of that block seven, as part of it.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Okay, so what used to be the street dedicated, now has a house on it. Okay. All right. Okay.
And then the city attorney kind of flushed out that idea of the development agreement with deed restrictions a little bit more, to include a floodplain acknowledgement and then to request the removal of the fences, sheds, playsets, and other obstructions that are actually currently located on the utility easement.
Yeah, so if you look at kind of the north side of all the outlaws that's being, currently being proposed to be platted, there's an existing sanitary sewer easement along that corridor. There's a fair amount of yard barns, fencing, playground, et cetera, across that easement. So the concern would be at some point, we need to maintain that sanitary sewer and actually upsize that sanitary sewer, finishing the coming years as the city grows. So the concern there is, is that it'd be nice to have a little understanding that as a utility easement, in that we'd like to preserve our rights to maintain and reconstruct the utilities as needed. So I'm not sure how that would be part of this plating review, because there's some city ordinance that doesn't really support kind of the attorney's documentation, but this is something that we'd like to make sure is clear.
I'm Rich Massey from Massey Surveying and Engineering. Thing with the easements is you're protected by law because people are not supposed to be, you know, and most times when people come in with utilities and they're going to move and improve the utilities, there's a courtesy call to the people or visit, say, okay, your fences are here, you got a shed in here, you got so many days to move it. If you don't, then we're coming through with a backhoe and then a storm.
Right.
That's typically the way it is, you know, so by law, you're covered already. As far as requiring them to remove it as part of this approval, I don't see where you got the jurisdiction for that.
My issue is, Brandon, I understand where you're coming from, and just being involved in construction, I've seen them, in Owatonna especially, make them move everything out, and two years later, they're right back in there again. You can't keep people out.
No.
But they most should understand that if they do upsize that sewer, your private property will be removed if you don't remove it. That's the way it is.
And no reimbursement for replacement, that's part of it, too.
I think that was the intent of the attorney's comment, that at the end of the day, there's a utility, and there needs to be some acknowledgement of that utility in place.
Right.
Any more questions or comments for Brandon? With that said, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you would, please come up to podium, share your name and your address with Linda. A lot of people in the room tonight, so if you'd be somewhat mindful of your comments, I would like to hear everybody's thoughts on the matter.
So that's our start, right? Jackie Long and Deck 1002, Third Street Northeast. So the first question is, you're making comments about a lot Q. So I don't know if your plot met as different as ours, but we don't have Qs.
Yeah, they went from numbers to a lot of.
So my very first comment is obviously the plan you guys are looking at is not correct because as someone else has noted, that 10th Avenue potential street is a house lot, those lines on there are not correct. So that doesn't give us or you a fair expectation of what this means. There's no access to any of this property back here except for through the owner's lot, is our understanding?
Right.
Okay, so what is the future for this plotted land, and what does that mean once it's plotted? So if there's no access to it, it's on floodplain, and what is the city requirement once it becomes a plotted lot? Does it have to be maintained? Is it like need to have that access to it? It backs up to our property? That's my question. I mean, we have ordinances that our grass can't be taller, I mean, what does that mean once it's plotted?
Well, first off, that 60th Avenue, whatever it is, it says now vacated underneath it, so that is in there right, anyway. The idea what Mr. Casel was intending to do here was since people are already occupying back there, and he had purchased this land from Carter Blaine, he thought, apparently there was quite a few people that were interested in purchasing additional to make their backyards bigger. There was no intention to put any kind of access to it or building lots or any of that sort of thing. It just was to sell them kind of what they're already using, I guess.
Can I follow up with a question then?
Sure.
So, let's say I decide to exercise that right and purchase this piece of property, now pay taxes on it as a plotted piece of property that can't be built on or insured because it's on a floodplain. Just to clarify.
My name is Stacy Fiskus, live at 806 Third Street. I have a question now. What happens if the people say, well, I don't want to do this because it's going to, you know, my taxes are, you know, high anyway, so why should I get more land behind me that they're going to jack up my taxes on it some more, and I can't do nothing on it? You know, what's going to happen if we say no? You're all going to sell somebody, and they're going to do something behind us, or what? You know, and take the, you know, take the risk that, you know, it is on a floodplain, but you know, you know, someone back there and build on it anyway? You know, just what's going to happen if we don't do it? That's the question also. You know, if we don't want to buy the land, can they do whatever they want with it then, right? Are they going to stuck with it, stuck with buying it, or do they, you know, do you just ram it down our throat, or are you going to just say, okay, it's just going to stay like it is? You know, because right now, we mow it, our people mow it, city mows it once in a great while, but you know, most times, the people back there mow it, you know, we take care of it, and you know, we don't get reimbursed for it. You know, Milford, you know, the guy that died a few years ago, he used to mow the whole thing. He mowed it for 15 years. And you know, he never got reimbursed for it. He just liked to do it, like the backyard, that's just a big backyard, is all it is. And so now, it's like if someone, if we don't want to pay for it, you know, just to have a nice little backyard, what happens? You know, can they sell it, and somebody else come in behind there and build something? You know, because even if it is on floodplain, you can't get insurance on it, you still build something. You know, if the city says, okay, we need to redo the sewer again, oh, okay, I can move it or tear it down, but you know, is that what can happen? That's another question I got. Thanks.
Well, I don't think anybody's going to be forced into buying it. I think the option is, if you want to purchase it, you can, otherwise Ron will retain ownership of it. That was kind of the indication. I think part of the reason is he's got, he owns this now, and there's people occupying a lot of it, and you know, there's some liability issue, and I don't know. I know this has been a, some people wanted to do this for quite a few years, because Carter's talked to me about it a few times also, but I think it's optional to purchase it. I don't know anybody's going to hold the gun to anybody's head, so.
What are your plans to do with the land plots that are not mowed?
I would probably mow them to the same area. I'm Ron Casel, I live at 912 Third Street Northeast. I would probably just mow them, or if the people that are there want to mow them, they can mow them, down sticks and trees that are in the way for doing that, we'd probably clean some of that up. My preference would be the people that are backyarded there would be interested in buying that lot and take ownership of it. And at that point, you know, you've got your corners, you know, because is what we got right now, is we got about 15, 20 people that are, you know, occupying, sooner or later, somebody's going to get hurt. And when that happens, you can have liability insurance on this. I have liability insurance right now. I have a million dollars. I don't know if that's enough if your kid drowns on my land or not. But you can, you can have, you will have a deed with a legal description, meets and bounds legal description, it is insurable. It's fairly cheap insurance. Right now, the entire 11 acres back there, the taxes are $600 a year. I don't know what these will be when they divide them up, but the chart and the basis and how they come up with that, it's not the same as a residential house. So it's, I would estimate somewhere around a hundred bucks for the taxes per year. The measurements around this drawing are kind of small to see, but most of them are 120 feet deep from your property, and then back 120 feet. So there is no other access. Your yard is the access you got. So that's the intent here. Because otherwise, being the owner, and my liability insurance doesn't really cover you. I can't give you permission to go out there and do whatever you want to do. It makes some hard decisions. I don't want to make those either.
Can I ask how many people you've actually got that's tentatively agreed to buy lots?
The ones that aren't here. The ones that are here, I just haven't talked to. There's no use running around saying, this is what I'm doing, this is what the plan is, and it's supposed to be. Wanted to get it through this stage. A letter went out to the neighborhood, and I'm sure that's why everybody's here, because it's like, what's going on? They building houses back here, where's the road going to be? But part of it, I think, is.
Joe Grodevoir, I live at 102 8th Avenue Northeast. I'm not opposed to buying. I don't, you know, know what the price is going to be, what my, you know, my taxes will be and whatnot, and then flood insurance and how it'll affect flood insurance on my home, because I'll have floodplain now. But that's beside the point. If I can afford and don't decide, can my next door neighbor buy behind me and then park his trailer or his snowmobiles or things like that, is what I'm wondering. Am I going to be forced to come up with the money to buy it? You know, I maintained my spot for 25 years, and the easement's going to run right along the back of my property, so I can't really put anything on it, or wouldn't, because mine does flood, so, but you know, I'm just wondering, can the neighbor then buy it and put stuff back there? You'd be right.
If that's something that you would want your neighbor to do, and you're in agreeance to that, I would go along with that. I really would like to give ample opportunity to the people that own the direct home right there.
You know, I get it, but I don't know if I can afford the tax increase and what you're to, I don't know what you're asking and things like that. I'm not opposed to buying, but if I can't afford to, can my neighbor then purchase it and then do what he wants, like put his snowmobiles back there or his trailer at camp or right behind our house if he were to purchase that?
Well, there will be deed restrictions on there as far as additional fencing and storage of things. I mean, I don't, we didn't have a discussion on putting things like that down in the floodplain, but it's probably something that should be added to a deed restriction on the floodplain line as far as storing trailers or cars or anything like that. It really is being treated just like an extension to your backyard, because if you start putting a whole bunch of things in your backyard, pretty soon the city is up in arms, and what are you doing back there? So it's really, that's what it is. It's an extension of your backyard. Instead of having 50 feet, you're going to have 170.
Yeah, but this 170 feet, where people that, you know, they can park their stuff and they're going to get, this lot here, I'm on, well, I'm on.
If this is accurate, my son printed this out from his website, yeah, so we are like right here. Do we even have an option of purchasing land? It looks like it goes this way.
That line, that line right there is just a quarter, quarter, quarter section line, that's not, that's a complete.
Right, so since we're, our house is here, we don't even have an option. Is that right?
What are you treating by that corner lot, because there's three houses that touch that lot.
Okay, so it's not necessarily right behind your house?
See, this lot right here, that's you, right?
Two, just two.
That's good.
That's this neighbor's driveway.
This line here doesn't belong there. Imagine that line is gone. See, that lot comes out. So this house, this house, or that house, really, all three of them happen to neighbor that corner lot right there. That's lot number E, I guess we're talking about. And they happen to be the very east one touching lot E.
I guess I have a follow up on that. We haven't seen any of the deed restrictions, but given that this is floodplain, is the city's going to allow people to store things on these lots that can be washed out by the floodwaters in the spring? I think that should really be considered, especially motor vehicles or anything that have contaminations, but that whole area floods and gets carried downstream. I think that's a concern.
I'm not supposed to respond. As far as to the present day, there hasn't been any vehicles, any, anything that I know have ever parked down in those areas overnight or at all. There really hasn't been no cars or pickups or anything that even sits down in there. And I would actually think that that's the way it would stay. It's just, it's however you treat your backyard, I mean, if a lawnmower runs out of gas, it won't sit there no longer.
Nicole Lambright, 906 Third Street Northeast. There have been vehicles parked back there in the past. Our neighbors that used to live next to us in Justin's house have a shed back there, and there are mowers, there's gas cans, there's all that kind of stuff back there already. So there have been. Another consideration, I do know several of us, when we bought our houses, were misinformed about who owned that land back there. We were under the impression that the city owned it. When we moved in, that's what our previous owners told us. I know some others have other things in the information that when they bought their house, we did not know that Blaine owned that. The people before us told us, we could do with that land as we saw fit, if we wanted to clear it off and use it, we had every right to.
With the understanding that that might change.
Right, right. If the city were to come in and do anything back there. Another question, we have been in our house for 10 years. We are moving Thursday. But what about squatters' rights? We've been clearing that land. I, we took trees and stuff down there and kind of made it our own. And I thought something else that needs to be considered.
Anybody else have anything I'd like to contribute? With that said, I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
I'm not exactly sure I'd start this conversation, because I think we've got a lot of discrepancies between homeowners and the gentleman that owns that land, as opposed to necessarily a conversation about having one establish a plat back there.
Well, I understand what everybody was saying, but the property owner is well within his right to make this request and to do with his property if he sees fit, whether he chooses to sell or to not sell it, or to restrict access. So all those who have property along the pier may have to move, you know, if Mr. Casel was not to sell any of this, they would have to move their sheds and their fences and everything back onto what they own. Despite the fact that they've cared for this for a number of years, I understand that, but it wasn't yours, it is not your property. So I think Mr. Casel will probably say, thank you very much for maintaining my property, you know, move back on, hunt your own. So, you know, I don't, with the fact that there's no access to this, I don't know that any of these lots are buildable. And I don't know how Mr. Casel would get back there. Maybe he's got access to it from further east to get back in here if he wants to build on that. Brandon, do you know?
Yeah, so part of the staff recommendation includes a deed restriction.
Yep.
Staff's recommendation within that deed restriction is a building restriction to not allow any building in there.
Okay.
In addition to that deed restriction, we would have floodplain ordinance that would likely prevent on a majority of the outlaws, any obstructions, so.
Yep, and none of those deed restrictions have been established yet?
Correct, because the lots haven't been established or something. Maybe the city attorney and the applicant would have to kind of negotiate, work through, and bring it back to the PMZ and planning, I'm sorry, council. We just haven't got to that point yet, staff. But the intent is to not allow any building back there.
Yeah, in regards to statement made about squatters' rights, I don't know, somebody, any idea what legal precedent is in any of that?
Well, I think we would not even venture there.
Yeah, if you're going to go for embers possession, it takes 15 years minimum, then you have to go to court.
Yeah, I just, I just don't know what the precedent is, whether that even be considered.
Yeah.
So, you know.
It's more costly than it would be worth to try.
Yeah.
I would assume any intent to build back here would impede the city's ability to gain access to the easement anyway. It's in the city's best interest to establish this as a no building area.
So again, I mean, I go back to, you know, the rec staff recommendation we had, and kind of the give and take here was to allow some encroach around the floodplain, if you want to call it that, with the lots, with in turn, give some benefit to the south side of the river. It's kind of, we sat down with the developer, but you're right, there could be a good presence here to strictly reject the subdivisions based on the concerns of the floodplain, and they already encroached on the easement and the private property and that. Again, when we sat down with the applicant, we kind of thought, well, there was some, there was some interest here in maintaining a parkland, a continuation of the east park, right on the other side of the creek, on the west side of the project, creating that greenway, that beltway for a future trail, which is shown in the comp plan that's currently being drafted, so it's kind of a negotiation. And we don't call out a fourth option, I think we talked about it briefly when we met with the applicant, to maintain city ownership over the entire thing, could be something that the applicant and the city want to discuss too, and maybe go back to the drawing board and leave it all to the city, but I don't know if that's what the applicant was looking for, but it could be something that could be directed to staff, the applicant, to discuss that too, at the kind of, at a council level, but if this is rejected or go a different direction.
And I just, so I just, to be clear, your obligation this evening was to have a public hearing? Okay, and that's your only obligation tonight? Okay.
Brandon, on this outlot S, that actually, that's what we, we put that in the last group, we kind of talked about that conservation corridor, is actually delivered. That's the answer here. Well, that's, that was kind of the idea with that outlot S was to, when we, we put that on after we met with Brandon and Teresa, and that was going to be the conservation corridor, that was the thinking over.
Which one is outlot S? I'm pretty sure it's outlot B.
Well, it's been revised since then. This is what it is.
On the public hearing, we don't have the same any different.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We didn't have a date.
We got a general, we got a general rule of thumb, so the preliminary plat, that's probably.
My final statement, everything that I've heard here tonight so far is between the property owners and Mr. Casel, I have nothing to do with our actions as far as these things.
Yeah.
I would just take note of their concerns.
Well, you have a right to give us a public hearing that has a date.
I don't know, this was all on the packets, right?
It was all, it was.
This is all the great, this is all the stuff that was in there. It was available online?
No, no.
No, but it was available, pretty how I got it.
It was available online, too, in the.
Oh, okay.
Not the updated version?
Yeah, the updated version is on the calendar and on the planning commission in the package.
What date of the packet?
April 9.
So which one? April 9? Plan and Commission Packet 3-1218, Plan and Commission Packet. Now, what I can see, you may have to double check.
I honestly think there's too many questions to even begin to move forward. There needs to be a lot more conversation between the property owner and the homeowners that had bought up to this property. Because, to be honest, every question that was asked tonight was directed at the property owner, not at, not at us. At that point, I, I think that we should just reject it at this point, and I think it should come back to us after some of those questions and things have been, you know, whether we have to have another public hearing at that point, with the date. And, you know, and move forward with something at that point, but I just, I think there's way too many, way too many unanswered questions as to the potential for what might happen if, if things don't get sold to the property owners, if they do get sold, what, you know, if there's deed restrictions and different things like that, as far as, you know, what the city plans to do with, with some of that kind of stuff, with, you know, I think we should be having answers to all of those kinds of questions on our side before we, before we say we're going to move forward with something. My opinion on that.
Well, you do have a subdivision application. Okay, so your plan shall review that, forming a zoning commission and approved by the city council before the final flat can be reviewed. Subdivision application shall be preliminarily approved or disapproved by the municipality within a hundred and twenty days following acceptance of the application. By your, not time crunched to the point where if you don't reject it, you'll run out of time to act on it.
I guess what I'm kind of wondering though is that, I mean, we were already here with the general development plan, but conceptually, what Mr. Casel intends to do, is there any real opposition to that portion of it, as far as dividing it out and then retaining that conservation corridor along there, providing the city those two little outlots, you know, so the city can take care of some of the storm sewer problems they have there, just to continue the easement down. And then, that's part of what he was thinking about doing was, over in the southwest corner, that being part of the parkland dedication, so the city can kind of clean things up there with the issues they have around it, because of where the railroad bridge is and the jazz. So, it's.
We'd be extending your part one acre to the east.
And I guess I don't think that Mr. Casel intended, anticipated this much opposition from people that are already onto somebody else's land using it, but.
Are there any planned restrictions on use of outlot, well, we have A and B, I think it's Q and Fs or whatever, are there any planned restrictions on that? Is it to be public, what's the intent?
Where's, I don't know.
On outlots S and T.
Yeah, he was going to retain ownership of that, and then we were going to, we talked with the city, because this is going to be a conservation corridor, so nobody was, that was going to be for, if they maybe decided to put a tack on it, whatever, nobody was going to get in there and do anything with that.
So what I, the reason I'm asking is like, would city ordinance is around ATV usage and things like that apply in that location, or is that going to be Casel Speedway, or what is that going to be?
I don't know that I ever heard anything about Casel Speedway, but I'm thinking if anybody else was going to go back in there, they would probably have to get permission.
From my understanding, on city ordinance, on ATVs, you're free to ride on your own land, such if you had one, you can ride around your house, you can stay with him, the pins around your house. This land here is the same thing, it's privately owned land, it has to conform to city policy on how ATVs are handled.
And snowmobiles also?
You can't do a commercial thing, or you can't take any sort of.
And I would guess if somebody got off there being a real knucklehead, somebody might turn them into a DNR, or maybe they'd get reported somewhere, you know, if you start ripping it up, but it's just destruction of property, and we still have that, no matter what you got going on, so.
You've got an ATV with liability insurance, I'd probably mention that.
No, I don't, I just don't, what I don't want is to turn into. As politely and respectfully as I can, guys, everybody has very legitimate concerns, but this is a meeting about a plat, and I think a lot of the issues being concerned really are from Mr. Casel, not necessarily for the city. And would encourage everybody to sit down and have a better understanding of what this gentleman's intention is with his land. So I, I need to ask, we kind of stay on target here and kind of go through the process, and I'd like to solicit some more information from the gentleman here, and we'll try to figure out a plat in four, but it's only going to be painted through the plat.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, do you have anything you'd like to contribute?
Not kidding, no. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I think you are the senior member here.
Thanks.
Well, I'm the old guy, but you're the senior member.
Yeah.
I mean, you have the most experience. The way it's laid out right now, and if he's giving certain amount to parkland, although we were looking to get some preliminary access for a trail, correct?
Right.
Yep.
As long as everything is good that way, there's really no reason for us not to move forward with this, because it's between him and the landlords. What happens thereafter, as long as everybody understands that there are restrictions with what they do with this land, and it is in a floodplain, and the city, if they want to come through and fix their sewer, no matter, even if you have something there now, it has to get moved at your expense. And if the DNR comes in and you've got a building in a floodplain, they're going to go after you, not us.
Yeah, I agree, and I think Brandon made that point earlier, is that it's going to be between Mr. Casel and the property owners, and then the city, if we put in the greenway there, and then the deed restrictions to be established yet. So we, we'll have some say on that.
If I could add, yes and no. From an engineering, greenway perspective, those lots, right now, basically a butt to the hundred-year floodplain. By extending those lots, we're going to extend the lots into the hundred-year floodplain. From an engineering, regulatory, planning and zoning administrator getting phone calls perspective, you don't necessarily like that. So what we discussed with the developer was, well, what's a little bit of give and take here? Okay, extend your lots, you've been using it, we.
They're just some green space.
I think they have good intentions, but we're going to get some green space, or at least a trail environmental corridor along the other side of the river, so that's kind of the give and take, or that's what the staff recommendation is. There could be some, some conversation of, again, rejecting this plat based on that being in a hundred-year floodplain, and not a good spot to have backyards, so the city has other locations that this has become a problem. Bigelow Voight area, the city administrator gets phone calls that the backyard is wet. Yes, you have a wetland, your lot is applied to wetland, sorry, we, there's a protectiveness, so we can't do anything. So that's one of the negatives here that, again, could sway this kind of in the other direction. The middle ground that we're trying to find here with the applicant, and ultimately protect homeowners and homeowners, talk about secondary or third homeowners after it's sold, is the deed restriction in the drainage and over those lots. By restricting what's constructed back there, I think that ultimately is what the applicant realizes and understands, I don't want to speak for you, but objective, if you disagree, but provide that preservation, a little bit of, again, the balancing of just rejecting us and saying, no, lots should abut and should be in a hundred-year floodplain, actually, it's more of a little bit of a compromise. And again, we're getting some corridor, I don't think it's going to resolve yet, on the south side of the river, to meet our goals of having a greenbelt, we call them, or trail corridor, from east park going to the west, and the future development to the west, and ultimately to the north to tie into the Dodge County Trail System, is what's proposed in the comp plan. Because again, if we kind of took the hard road and ejected it, now we have private property that we don't have a trail easement or corridor through to, so. Again, the intent here from the staff recommendation was, look at preserving those interests of the city, again, the floodplain management, the parklands, et cetera, but also be able to get those parklands in return, it's a little bit of a balancing act here, so.
And then.
And again, I'll go to the fourth recommendation, we don't necessarily have on it, and I don't think the applicant's too interested, is city ownership of these parcels, period. That could be a discussion that we could have in the future with the applicant, and then if it is parkland, and the city owns it, with ownership, likely comes more maintenance too, from the park department, so.
And then just maybe as reference, a point of reference on a trail easement, is that the intention along Maston Creek, north of Shavko, was to have a trail easement there, and then as development went forward, it didn't make it to the final plat, and now we're trying to backtrack and get it back, so I would say, if, if the idea is to have a trail, now's the time.
These are all good points that have been raised, and I kind of echo them. The point that's always kind of, that's kind of bothered me a little bit, has been access to them, because they don't, access to the outlots is only through the front lot of the building. Unless there was, you know, a trail along the back, then I would assume that we could get to it from the trail, maybe, I don't know. It remains to be solved, so.
It has been done. They have built that park all the way around.
Yeah, there used to be a trail all the way from behind Carter's, all those lots. I mean, it started down at Ron's proper, basically, and it followed all the way along the creek, all the way back as far as you can go. And we used to ride motorcycles, ATVs, they still run off the other side over there. There's still trails that are maintained over there by other participants that drive in there.
I built a house hunting for it, before any of your houses were anywhere near there. I know the trail well.
I mean, it's basically gone now because of how all the houses are lying there, there is no access except through our properties now. So basically, that trail that was originally there is basically dead now.
So would you have issue giving the city land for a?
As far as a bike trail, we talked about that. There's a couple of different locations, we could follow our lazy line along that ecological corridor, and have an easement, so you guys could have a guarantee, you could put one in, or we could put it up along the railroad track. We could, we can put a little ten, fifteen foot, twenty, twenty-foot wide dotted line somewhere and call that an easement for a future bike trail. As far as giving the city some land in general, we've got it outlined on our updated version here at the magic marker, if you guys want to take a look at it. It's, it's giving you an acre right along the park. I don't really got one copy here, but it involves S, Outlot S, so it would be the west, a little third approximately of the land, it comes up to right at an acre, and then these two little dump spots for your utilities, but also giving you that gold, so that would be acceptable, one point one required. Like I said, a couple of potential spots where if you ever wanted to run a future bike trail, and Carter knows the houses out in that field someday, that would be when that gets done. I probably won't be there then anyway. We talked to twenty years ago with those houses.
What would we want for a trail?
Well, we sent that, I suppose, including the package, some example documentation, I think it was in the GDP, some little GDP, Planning and Zoning Review Packet. There's some documentation that we can assist the city in for a trail corridor easement that's used by Castade, Thomasakan, North Side, Rochester, along the Zongo River, there's perpetuated trail easement along the Zongo River that we can rely on if that's the direction the commission would like to set staff on.
Why is that one, you know?
Yeah, I think it's for a ten-foot wide trail, but there's some provision there with grading, it gets a little easier said than done to actually construct the facility, but it does also restrict the other way from the private property that maybe additional trails coming off, just the certain corridors in there. And again, that's something we can discuss and negotiate. With that said, Outlot S is essentially along the creek bottom. We likely would not be building a trail along that. Outlot S would be into Outlot P. We'd want to pull it away from the creek a little bit and get to cast some higher ground due to the wetland, and obviously the level of service of the trail, we're too close to the creek, it's going to be under water, so we've got some structural issues there, so that's something that can work out, if that's the direction the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to give. Then the next question could be, and I haven't looked in the ordinance on what is conveyed as physically parkland in the actual floodplain, that encompasses pretty much all of Outlot S and most of T, so what technically is parkland? Some cities require parkland to be buildable, and if it's in a hundred-year floodplain, it could be viewed as non-buildable, so then what is the dedication, is that acceptable dedication? The argument could be made that Outlot S and the other acre is well over the ten percent that I think is currently in the ordinance, but that could be a discussion, is that ten percent buildable and outside the hundred-year floodplain? Which I think the only thing of Outlot S and T is the very kind of north, excuse me, southeast corner is outside the hundred-year floodplain. But I'm not, I don't quite have the ordinance in front of me, I'm hands around, but if somebody can report back on what the ordinance actually states. Secondly, that's a, that's a minimum dedication. There can be more dedicated than the actual ten percent, the ten percent's more of a, I'll call it a traditional subdivision. We're building out houses and planning, I guess one-on-one tells you that ten percent of residential areas should be parkland, so that's kind of where all the city ordinance has been derived from. So in that, what I would argue, and the reason for, again, my staff recommendation, dedicating more open space, is this is a unique situation where we have a hundred-year floodplain, we have a greenway corridor, comp plan element to it, I'll call it. Therefore, that's where we feel that, I feel as a city engineer, as we made the recommendation, as we did, to ultimately convey all the south side of the creek as a, as a parkland open space reservation. It's not a residential subdivision where ten percent is going to a ball field or a jungle gym, if you will, so it's just a little different. With that said, happy to sit back down with the applicant and come up with something if, if you give us that direction.
That's what I'd like to see. Something to include the bike path, a real determination on the parkland, otherwise, like Duane says, it's his land, and if he wants to divide it up and sell it, it's his thing, but I'd like to see a little more accurate agreement on the bike path, parkland. That's just my view. If we, if you guys can come up with something.
For the bike path, we can just delineate it as a different outlot, and that would be the way to, then it's, then it's easier to deed that to the city, they're doing, you can't put a bike easement on there anyway, you're only just utilities. Yeah, and as far as the location of it, Brandon, we can, we can, we just.
We can, we can elevate it and up there, if you want it down the floodplain. Originally, the original developer had the bike path on the north side of the creek, more than fifty feet away, so the original bike path is actually right up where these lots are, where the fences are. So the fences would have been in the way of the bike path, because it would have been right next to utilities, you know. So it's what we're doing, is trying to find a location for the future bike path on the south side of Maston Creek, which I would be donating that land toward the city. on the south side of Maston Creek, which I would be donating that land toward the city, or at least easement. It will give you an acre, acre and a quarter, whatever that plot right east of the existing park is, and then an easement or ownership of a bike path. The ownership could get a little tricky because of that strip in the middle of something that I might still own. The easement might work a little bit better, but we need to look at elevations in different locations and come up with a plan that isn't going to require a massive amount of dirtwork out there to get through and bend the gravel pit so you can run the bike paths through there.
Do you also want to see, what the deed restrictions might look like as well?
I would like to.
Yeah, we need to know what can, what that would tap, would be of worth, especially for anybody that's possibly looking towards purchasing. If this is the way they're supposed to, comes to like, list of covenants or whatever. I suppose it could be remedied that way, but it's one of the things we'll have to find some options for.
Is that workable?
I think so.
So right now, I have bike path, parkland determination, and deed restrictions, the three things to work for.
I'll move to table.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so this is one of those things where Duane had asked us, you know, what kind of things, well, we get a lot of variance support, and sports press boxes were going to turn into one of those things where it was just going to be one variance after another, pretty much. So to that end, we've added that to the type restriction exemption.
Excuse me, Ron. Ron, can you guys take that conversation off the hall, please? Thank you.
So that's what this is here for.
With that said, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody has any comments they would like to make on ordinance 154 pertaining to height limitations.
Do you want to say something?
My daughter's distracted.
She looks like she wants to talk to her-
Did you want to say something?
At least give us your address.
You're fine.
It's the, it was what, three or four feet above the limit right now?
No, it was like one story. So the current, because of the current restriction on accessory buildings in residential zoning, which all of the schools are, it was, accessory buildings could be one story and not to exceed sixteen feet. Well, sports, I think the very next sports press box they're going to come to us with is three stories, and the one that we just gave them a variance for was like for two additional-
Eighteen feet.
Two additional feet, and I think then we still have two more, we can still anticipate there's going to be two more press box requests after that, so, so here we are.
Any comments, public hearing wise?
How many press boxes do they need?
Well, they've got, we're putting one, one in the softball field by the elementary school, middle school there. So they've got one that'll face both, both fields. So they have two stories, so they can get up above the bleachers that'll go in underneath that, and then they're doing one out at the baseball fields as well, and I'm not sure where-
I think a new one in the football field is kind of-
The new crow's nest.
In the, yeah, in the plan, so.
They're not going to put up a jumbotron like at Carter's Field or something like that.
Well, that's a whole different, that's not a sports press box, that's a whole different thing. That gets in the sign order, and if they do that, yeah.
That one gets stigma.
Yeah, that's different. That would be different. So here you are.
Any more comments? I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
I like the new wording.
Okay.
With the, associated with the conditions of permitted use. I mean, that covers all bases. I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on our agenda, ordinance revisions, floodplain ordinance in chapter 152, design standards.
So, you know, we can take as much or as little of this as you want to tackle tonight. Maybe since we have Brandon here, we can focus on the floodplain ordinance, and I did a couple of things. One, is I took the current floodplain ordinance and took a go at it, and then on the engineer's recommendation, took a look at a more restrictive option for floodplain ordinance with the idea in mind that actually that could be preserved as greenway, green space, so that we don't need all the restrictions about how you could or could not build, or what you can and cannot do. It would be more, it's preserved. So there's two options. You don't have to go either way tonight, but we have our engineer here. Maybe, I'll just turn the floor over to Brandon, let him talk a little bit about the-
Pretty straightforward.
The good and the bad, and the, yeah.
Currently, the current floodplain ordinance, I'll call it, may be not real restrictive on development. Someone, Teresa, said she was looking at rewriting the floodplain ordinance. We provided her what is in your commissioner's packet as prohibited sample ordinance with markups. We provided that, I think that comes from, might be the DNR, but it comes from one of the Minnesota agencies that has an interest in more restrictive floodplain management. So we provided that as a draft, and Teresa went through and marked it up, basically applying it to the city of Cason, other than I did have one concern on the variance process.
Right.
That's removed, and Teresa, I haven't really got to circle back as a staff to have more conversation on this, but that may be something that we may, we would need to, we have remained within the-
So we would still include it. We can still include it. I, I kind of read through it the first time and went, well, do we really want to do variance with any of them? But, but we could leave it as a process. So I suppose probably like, from a staff perspective, the first question is, is there a preference that we work with the existing ordinance? Or are you happy to have us take the more restrictive model and bring that back to you?
Well, personally, I like the more restrictive model over what we have, and I had a number of markups on what we currently have, so, which addressed a lot of it in here.
Okay.
The one thing that still kind of nags at me a little bit, even in the restrictive, is the non-conforming and the continuance of non-conforming uses and structures.
Okay.
I just think that we could be a little bit more, even more restrictive than what that is.
Okay. So basically, giving a sunset and saying, we're going to pass this ordinance, and in two years, no more non-conforming use will exist within that area?
Yeah, something wrong, I don't know.
Okay.
Because if we're going to be restrictive and establishing, and make things non-conforming, and I ultimately wanted everybody to conform to what the ordinance is, and by allowing them to continue to expand or whatever up to 50% of the market value, to me, it's just a misconception. We've run into those issues before with non-conforming uses in our, you know, zoning districts, and when we're dealing with floodplains, to me, it made absolutely no sense at all.
And then, did you have a strong feeling, one way or the other, about the variance?
You know, I, I totally ignored it since it was already crossed out.
Already had read up, okay.
Yeah, so I, I'm willing to entertain looking at it again.
Okay, all right.
Do we know if we have a lot of non-conforming uses in the floodplain? Is that-
We don't, but if we pass it, we may.
Yeah.
I shouldn't say we don't, I don't know if we do.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a property along Second Street Southwest as part of the current reconstruction project. There's some discussion there, that's on the, the north side of the Maston Creek and the north side of Shopko there. There was some discussion there whether or not that structure, which really Mr. Cason himself owned at one point and lived in-
Historic structure?
Yeah. But there was some discussion whether or not that property was actually in the floodplain or not, and how it affected the value when it came to the assessment. And that corridor is about the only one that I could think of that's currently really in the floodplain, and that's the intent of this restrictive ordinance, is the 100-year floodplain itself, to keep structures out, which is obviously a good, good thing. That's the only thing I could think of, you know, the, everything else has kind of been developed through that corridor and established a floodplain, and I guess it would be if the floodplain changed, was increased due to the change kind of in the floodplain elevation, it's been kind of a trend we're seeing, but I guess maybe structures could be put in the floodplain, I guess. But currently, no, I don't think we have a whole lot, but I'd be worried about a change in the floodplain.
That's supposed to be coming out pretty soon, isn't it?
We had a meeting with them, but it's-
Yeah, we're working on that. That's something that we're tasked with as a city engineers. We're working on that with the DNR. They're doing some parallel, I'll call it, parallel mapping, too, so we're trying to line up the DNR and our work, too, so we can kind of submit it all as one to theme, so it's gotten a little more messy on our side and more a little strung out with the timeline perspective, so. But at this point, I don't see a real big change in the floodplain based on our modeling and how it kind of is more accurate and better than what it was in the 70s or 80s when that map came out, so. So we're working on it. But that, that's a prime example. If that map changes, then everything could be subject to the floodplain ordinance, because that floodplain is physically changing, changing on the map, if you will, so.
Which leads me to, do we, what, would we, what should we do, or something like that at this point? And then all of a sudden have a change, what would, what would that, where would that leave us, you know, down the road? Can we get ourselves, by changing this right now, or rewriting it, or do we leave it alone?
About the ordinance itself? I don't think the, the ordinance just references the floodplain, that establishes the floodplain ordinance, so I don't think that changing it would really affect that. If you're in the floodplain, you're in the floodplain, and there's ramifications for it, so I don't know if this would really change anything, other than, I guess, the non-conformities, if you add one in there, what does that mean? I'm not sure if there's a legal standpoint on that. Also, there may be some legal precedents here. As a city engineer, not your attorney, I don't know, so I don't want to speak on that, but there may be some, some other legal items in play here on the non-conformities. But if the example ordinance is in place, and, you know, it's provided by the DNR, another state agency that is interested in having more restrictive floodplanes, I would say that where it's in place would be, I would assume, reviewed by some attorney in some manner. I don't know if this is by the legal association, I can report back on where we got this. I know I got it from our, our floodplain guy.
No, I think you're right. I think it's looking DNR.
DNR, legal association, so it's kind of invested through that process, so. I know when I ultimately said, all right, stormwater engineer, working with the city Cason, here's their floodplain ordinance, he looks at it, it's not real restrictive, I don't like it from a floodplain perspective and floodplain management and kind of best management practice from that perspective. Give me an example, here's your example, this is how we got to this point.
So it's kind of like, best guess at this point.
On the floodplain itself?
With keeping it the way it is. We're pretty protected as far as, because we've had, it's come down the chain from DNR and-
Army Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineers, so what we're looking at is pretty safe.
Safe in defining the floodplain?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can define a floodplain?
It's pretty close.
So if, yeah, it is, it's not going to change significantly. The ordinance is changing significantly, particularly with the new development and having some restrictions on the floodplain in a new development situation. So if Maston Creek continues to develop along the corridor downstream of the corridor going to the treatment plant, this ordinance would be in play in those developments. Or if homeowners buy land behind their houses, floodplain ordinance would be in play.
It's kind of where I'm getting this, reading my head from both directions on just what we went through a few minutes ago, because it raised a lot of questions, and some couldn't really answer yet, which was important, you know? Which we will definitely work on and find out for sure. Go back to, you know, getting this all set, definitely something we need to address.
So I will actually, I'll ask the city attorney, because our, because we already allow for variances, maybe we don't have to repeat it in this section, so I will double check that. And then also on some kind of sunset for non-conforming uses, you know, including would the city have to reimburse folks for lost value or something like that if we put a sunset on there, so.
Probably have some background on non-conformity.
Right, yeah.
Whether it's in case law or something, we're going in that.
Okay, so I will work on those two things in regards to the more restrictive version of the floodplain ordinance, okay? So we can bring that back to you that way. And then, design standards, I think we were trying to finish, finish that one up. Does anybody have any further comments on the changes that were in there? Some of this, I think we had already talked about, because we'd already moved the manufactured homes and trailers out of there.
Yep.
I took, I cleaned up some dollar amounts, so they don't show in there anymore, and the dollar amount would actually be on the fee schedule, not in the ordinance. Took out some definitions that were still showing up within the body of the ordinance. We do, we're updating that definition section and having hopefully just one set of definitions for the entire land use chapter. So have those pop up on us? So if you think you're pretty good with that, and do they already have that one in their updated 152, so you have it with your updates, if you're good with it, then we'll just kind of leave it in there as the updated version, and I think as Linda noted, this all requires a public hearing at some point before we make any changes to the land use ordinance, so this is kind of working to get it all, all ready for you guys to take a look at zones and your new comprehensive, in relation to your new comprehensive- a look at zones and your new comprehensive, in relation to your new comprehensive plans, so. Other than comments, so, do you want me to just move on to comprehensive plan updates? Okay, we'll just keep moving. So, any changes, get those, or any comments that you have, get those to me. I was hoping to have them by tonight, I'll still be typing them up tomorrow if you think of something, shoot it my way, comment wise, we'll get it, I'll get it off to Haysington Coblere Group, they're planning to meet with us at the library next Monday, the working group, the planning commission, and the council together, Casson Public Library, six PM, and they'll come back incorporating the comments that they've received. It will be June thirteenth before this goes to council, I think we have your May Planning Commission meeting as the public hearing.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, May fourteenth is the adoption, or is your public hearing, then you can make a recommendation of the council, the council has asked that we keep the agenda light for their second meeting in May, so it would go to their June thirteenth meeting for adoption by the council, given that that's the outcome of your public hearing, so. We could even push that back if you felt that you, as a commission, wanted to meet one more time before making your recommendations, so.
Is there a public presentation of this?
That will be in open house at five thirty, the night of your May meeting.
May fourteenth.
Yes.
So an hour before.
Right, right, and that will be here, we'll make it work somehow, so.
Well, it's at City Hall, not the library?
No, it's here, yeah, so we'll do the open house here and the public hearing here, at six thirty, your regular meeting time, an hour before will be open house.
I think the results of the public hearing are largely going to dictate how much time we need beyond that.
Right, exactly, exactly, so, yep, and that's fair enough. And I don't know how that, does that, your, how does the planning commission meeting like?
That'd be June eleventh, so you could take one more planning commission meeting before June thirteen.
Commission meeting, and still get it to the council on the thirteenth, so, yeah, actually that time is going to work out really good then. So that's where we are, there, we may be able to sneak in another public comment period between our meeting next Monday and your public hearing, just to give folks who maybe won't come in person an opportunity to provide some feedback, so.
This is going to be put on the website?
Yep, yes, we'll get it back on the website, I'll let everybody know, and I think Mark Meduska must have just sent it out to everybody at the school last time, because I got a lot of feedback from IP addresses in that area. Go ahead.
Do we have any other business challenge? Go ahead and turn the meeting.
All right, awesome, thank you.
Do you have a moment, Brandon?